To approve the consent agenda as it is.
I'll second.
So, a few things to point out on the consent agenda. There's a couple of non-normal items. There's a very small amount of land cash funds from Kendall County that you're approving. I think $567 or something by that, to that amount. Mr. Sousa also has a long list of technology equipment that we are asking you to declare surplus. That way, these are like the eighth grade Chromebooks that he can then sell off to families, things of that nature. But we also have the personnel report, and it was updated even just this afternoon because Dr. Heiser was able to come to agreement with his candidate to become assistant principal next year, and she even made it to the meeting tonight. So I'd like to congratulate Maria, and I'm gonna mess up the last name. Poppyish. Okay, I would have, I would not have gotten that correct, but Ms. Poppyish is here with us tonight, so congratulations. Thank you for being here. And that is the explanation of the consent agenda.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Ms. Voss?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mr. Sartorius?
Aye.
Mr. Schoenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye, motion carries. Congratulations.
The one action item we have for you tonight is just a revision of something you've already acted on. It is the bus lease bid. Mrs. Mary Robinson?
Am I good? Yeah, now I am, okay. So yes, we were notified, the board has already approved our bus lease back in February, and we were then notified by Kansas State Bank that they could not offer the rate that they had submitted. So we did things a little differently this year. Typically, when we do our bid, we deal with bus companies, and then the bus company typically has an internal leasing program that they submit with their bid. But then, after the bids are accepted, we usually go out to bids, or to banks on our own to see if we can get a better rate. So we did that this year, but the best rate did come directly from one of our bus companies. They had reached out to Kansas State Bank and submitted with their bid an actual leasing proposal. So it was a little bit different this year, but that was our best option, so we went ahead and had the board approve it, and then Kansas State Bank, with the market changing so quickly, then said they couldn't honor it. And since they weren't the ones that submitted the bid, we worked to try to come up with something as close as possible that was approved, but they weren't able to get the rate down to what the board had previously approved. So I reached back out to American Capital, and American Capital is a bank that we have worked with in the past on some of our leases, and we did reach out to them initially when the bid was submitted, and they, they weren't able to offer a lower rate. But now they are giving us the best rate, so they are at a rate of 2.92%. So this would only increase around $3,500 a year for the 10 buses. So we find that to be a reasonable solution, and it's well within our budget that we can make work. And so we're asking tonight that the board authorize us to enter into a five-year lease agreement. We'll still be purchasing the buses from Midwest Bus Sales, but then the lease agreement would be with American Capital with an annual cost of $149,688.14. Is there any questions?
The rate stays the same then for the five years?
Yes, like, so we lock in now, and then that's our, that would be our payment for the next five years.
Thanks.
Other questions for Mary? Okay, if not, I need a motion to accept the revised bus lease as presented.
I'll make the motion to accept the revised bus lease as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Ms. Voss?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mr. Sartorius?
Aye.
Mr. Schoenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye, motion carries.
All right, our first discussion information item is a presentation on the status of our instrumental music program, so I would like to invite our band instructors if they would care to come forward. One of the things we did with our ESER funding was expand the number of band instructors that we had, because when COVID hit, instrumental music instruction greatly changed, I think is a vast understatement. So, thank you all for being here.
Hi, my name is Kathy Tady. I'm the band director over at Menucha Intermediate School. I have behind me Mr. Brian Goodman, our new assistant director over at Menucha Intermediate. Mr. Thomas Nicer is over at the JH, and then we have Ms. Alexis Soika. Thank you very, very much for inviting us to come here today. We have so enjoyed what we've been able to do this year because of the added position, so thank you very, very much first for making this possible. We are just really excited by the changes that we're making and the progress that our students are making because we've been able to work together with additional people. Historically, our band program has had incredibly high numbers. Our four, our fifth and sixth grade building has had around 400 students with one person, and our junior high has had also some very high numbers with one person. This year, our numbers took quite a hit because of COVID, but because of that and because of the additional person, we've really been able to pinpoint our instruction and maximize what we're doing with the students and increase the rigor of our program. The band classroom is highly differentiated, so when students come in at the fifth and sixth grade level, a lot of them come in with zero ability level. But within that zero ability level, we are teaching eight different instruments in the same classroom all at once, and each instrument has some really unique challenges and techniques that we have to teach the students. As the students progress through seventh and eighth grade, the ability levels change and the instrumentation increases, so there's a lot of different things that happen within the classroom every day. And with, you know, only 40 or 45 minutes of class, we really have to make use of that. Having two people in the room makes a huge, huge difference. Already, we've seen major increases in our students' ability and also in the quality of their performances. In March, both of our programs put on concerts for the community and for the parents and for the school, and we really saw a huge, huge improvement in the quality of the performance. Our sixth grade students, for instance, and if you don't mind me speaking, Ms. Conquest, because I know you were there, but with our sixth grade students, they were playing music that our sixth grade students typically play in March. However, they were playing it at a much better quality with much more expression and musical technique than we've ever had, and these students started in August versus students in sixth grade who typically start in September of the year prior. So already, because we have additional help, we are making huge, huge strides. In addition, our retention rate has improved tremendously. With fifth and sixth grade band, our retention rate has unfortunately been somewhere around 60%. That means we lose 40% of our students. This year, we have lost between fifth and sixth grade less than 10 students. So already, we're seeing those dividends from having an extra person. Behind me, Mr. Goodman is going to come in and speak with you a little bit about some of the specifics of things that we've added.
Hello, my name is Brian Goodman, and I'm the assistant band director at Menucha Intermediate. Some things that we've implemented in the band program are being able to utilize sectionals. Because all of the students meet at the same time with every instrument available, it's somewhat difficult to teach those students their first basics of learning the instrument. So because there's two of us available, we're able to pull out students, whether that's in a section or individuals to work with them, to better meet their needs and help them be more successful in the classroom. We found that to be really, really helpful for the students. In addition, our students don't really typically receive paraprofessionals or additional help in our classroom. Having two people in the room helps so that more students can receive one-on-one aid and students can receive additional accommodations that they need. In addition, we have a variety of different teaching perspectives and teaching styles that we're able to utilize in the band room. Because we have four different people, we've gone to four different schools, we've had four different years of experience and all these different perspectives that we bring to the table, which really makes it a more well-rounded band program instead of just having one person give their ideas. So we feel that that's really helpful for the students to see that from their peers. In addition, we have an extra rehearsal space that we're able to use. We're able to use different teaching strategies and techniques because we have more people available. This way, the students can be working on their music and they're able to continuously get better, even if, if one of us finds like a roadblock in our education. We're able to say, hey, why don't we try this idea? And then the ideas will usually work out that way. In addition, with all of the additional practices and rehearsals that we've had, we're able to see the students from different perspectives, not just in the front of the room, but behind the room and to the side of the room. And this really helps out for those big rehearsals because sometimes we'll have about 70 fifth graders in the room or 70 sixth graders in the room, so having those extra adults in the room really helps out so that the students are able to have all their needs met because sometimes their instruments may not work, or sometimes they just, you know, may need a piece of music, so we're able to help them out a lot with, with having two people available. So we've seen some tremendous growth in just their education, but also how they are as humans when it comes to music, so thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Alexis Soika. I'm just gonna talk a little bit about what we see in regards to the future of the program in, in terms of like having these additional two band directors for our program. So we're expecting a growth in number, in numbers. MIS gets to do recruitment this year how they normally do, so during COVID, they didn't really get to reach out and let students really try out the instruments before they joined band. Now they're able to, and now there's two people to ensure that we pick the proper instrument for the students. We have a potential for additional ensembles, so we already added a woodwind choir. I do woodwind choir, Mr. Goodman does additional percussion ensemble at the intermediate school. We also are looking to include a brass choir, maybe additional percussion ensemble and jazz band as well, so it's just giving them different opportunities when really two band directors, like, they couldn't really do as many ensembles for the students due to like time constraints and all that stuff. Normally, band directors also have to deal with administrative tasks, so compared to normal teachers, we have to like make sure that we're planning for travel, so this year we're actually going out of state to Tennessee. Then normal travel, like parades, this has to deal with coordinating with travel companies, and then also we have to coordinate with like PM Music, so different companies to ensure that we get rentals, music, and additional materials for our classrooms, also hosting competitions and concerts, so things like that. We have to do administrative tasks, and it really helps to have two band directors in the room to split up those tasks so that we can fit the needs of our students while we have instruction rather than being hindered by the administrative tasks of being a band director. And then in addition to all of that, we really get professional development in our content area with working with another individual that is music education. So I learn from Mr. Nissler, Mr. Nissler learns from me, and same thing with Ms. Tady and Mr. Goodman. And then also, like tomorrow, Mr. Goodman is coming to the junior high just to observe us and make sure that we have like good continuity throughout the program and so that they can implement some things so that when the sixth graders come in the seventh grade, they feel more comfortable. And also, like, Mr. Nissler can go over to MIS and I can continue teaching at the junior high while he goes over there, just so that they have a, a name to a face and they, they feel more comfortable from the transition from sixth to seventh grade. So overall, we just see a lot of potential for growth and potential to give the students more opportunities because of these two additional jobs. Okay, and I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Nissler now.
So they, they put me at the end because they knew they were gonna say everything about band, and they wanted to see me just kind of flounder. But it's been, the, the, the numbers that we have right now are down, but with, I anticipate that they're gonna go right back up to where they were, if not higher, as soon as Ms. Tady and Mr. Goodman are able to, to recruit. It's been a decade plus of Ms. Tady being by herself at the intermediate school trying to start 200-plus students, brand-new beginners, trying to manipulate something they've never held before, get the read on the right way, put their hands in the right spot, sit right, take the right breath. The number one issue that we've had over the last decade is just so much help needed at the intermediate school with brand-new beginners. If you think about what we would do with a sports team, we would never put a coach with 200 kids and then expect success over the next couple of years. And she's done an absolutely fantastic job of that. It's been a fight just to keep kids in band. That one person with 200-plus kids, how many can we get to the junior high? How many can we get to stay invested and can we, can we get contact with so that that students will, those, those students will be interested in continuing to high school? So our view is that we want to get them ready for high school so they can go on and continue improving and be part of bigger and better stuff. As a result of that challenge, the gap has been and will continue to be, especially once our numbers go up, the gap as they age between the most advancing student and the most struggling student widens, and by the time it's eighth grade, it's quite large. So that's been my challenge over the last decade plus is how do I take the student who's pretty naturally gifted and knows everything that's going on before I say it and push them, and then come alongside the student who is still figuring out which way the mouthpiece goes on their instrument at the same time because they've been part of one out of 200 for the last three years? So already, we're really excited about seeing the ability to reach both of those types of students more effectively than we have in the past and be able to continue pushing the, the upper end of the program as well as rising the lower end of the program and getting more kids back involved at a higher level even than before. So, just any questions for us while we're here? Any curiousness about what's going on that we can answer?
Yeah, I'll start off. I don't know if it's a question so much as I wanted to harp on what you just said or reiterate in a moment is, I think our students are extremely intelligent, and they're able to see the investment from the district and from the, the folks on our end, and so to give you all more of an investment to help them, they see that. They'll be able to be in a room if there's one professional with 200 students and know that maybe it's not as important to the district that I succeed. So if we can give you the ability to help the students, I think that's a wonderful thing, and I think you guys are doing a great job.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, and just another comment, I've had a couple of kids have gone through the programs with you and Ms. Tady, and so thank you for the work that you guys have done, and with extra assistance, it'll be even better, so thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I could also say that my daughter Erin went through it, and she went, became a music major and cost me a lot of money, but she loves music. My question though is-
She will likely not be paying that back.
That's fine, it was, it was, it was an awesome investment, it really was. She loves music. Do you, are there summer programs?
So we usually do a camp that's a couple weeks to three weeks long at the end of the summer, and junior high is primarily designed to get ready for the parade season, and we're beginning and had the intention to begin before the world kind of went crazy, like a beginning band program to kind of jumpstart the incoming fifth graders to get them ready to go.
And then will we know what the summer parade schedule is?
Sure, I can share it.
That'd be great, thanks again.
Anybody else? Thank you so much for coming and presenting today. Appreciate it.
I, I will even say that I, I did reach out to see if we could get a small ensemble, and I was gonna put us back in the gym to actually have a little bit of music, but it's an institute day, so we, we didn't know if we could actually pull a band together or not, so thank you all for being here, really appreciate it. Sorry, my screen went dead. Okay, so the next thing that we wanted to bring your attention were the, the school improvement plans, and board members that have been with us for a little while remember the evenings where each school would come up and present their, their school improvement plan, and each presentation would take 20 to 25 minutes, and it became a very lengthy, lengthy meeting. So this year, we decided to basically ask the principals to submit their information in, you know, written form in a, in a predetermined format, and so they are all there for you to read and review. What we are gonna do is we are gonna walk through the junior highs, just so you can see what type of information that each of the schools has provided for you, so if we can bring that up.
Okay, so we're going to go over a couple of different areas. The, the big parts are going to be data, so we're going to look at both student and staff demographics, academic data, social, emotional data, and then also goals and reflections on what have we done so far this year and where do we want to go. So when we very first start to look at the student and staff demographics-
Will this be easier if you drive the, the video?
It might be, yes. Yeah, so I'm on the Google-
I think it's got you presenting now.
Excellent, okay. So when we first start by looking at student demographics, you'll, you can go through and see like, all of the schools will start with their ethnicity data, they'll have racial and ethnic diversity, they'll have information about how many kiddos are in the building from status for building, we have information on our students by ID.
Erin, thank you, I apologize. Okay, that's really loud now. We also have information on our multilingual students. The state categorizes that information as ELL data or English Language Learners, and in each of these, you can see the difference between the school, the district, and the state levels, so you can see the different color of the, the, the charts. We also have information on our homeless, or we often abbreviate that as MVA, which is McKinney-Vento Act, and that is the act that supports our kiddos with, with situations that would, that they have compromised living situations. When we look at staff demographics, it's going to be very similar. We're gonna look at the total breakdown, so what exactly is our staff composed of? So looking at administrators, our classroom teachers, support staff. Then we'll also look at their racial and ethnic diversity, so you can compare the differences between the students and the staff and the similarities. We'll also look at the classroom and teacher breakdown. And each of these might look slightly different building to building, like, for example, at the junior high, you can see they have the breakdown of seventh and eighth grade, split level teachers at the elementary schools, they'll have it more broken down by those specific grade levels. Then we have certified staff, and then we dive into the academic data. So you'll see that we have reading data and math data. We've pulled a lot of that information from MAP assessments, which we take three times a year in the fall, winter, and spring. So this data is pulled from the winter data. When we look at comparisons, we're looking a lot at the winter from 2019 to winter of 2021 because of the COVID year of 2020, we didn't, not all of the students participated in MAP, so to have the most similar comparisons, we pulled from 19, I'm sorry, 2019 data. So this one here specifically, if you look at this, this tells us how many kiddos are below, low average, average, the green is high average, and the blue is higher average, so above the scores. We really want to see those kiddos in that yellow, green, and blue. We want to see the numbers of kiddos in the red and the orange decreasing where the, with the other colors increasing. So they have, for example, at the junior high, seventh and eighth grade data. This is that cohort data where we've shared this a couple times this year already district-wide, but they're really honing in on specifically the grade levels and the building. When you get to the elementaries, they'll desegregate that by building. So if you look at the color pattern, so for example, our seventh grade kiddos, you can see where they were in seventh grade in 2021 is in purple, in 2019 in, when they were in fifth grade, and then when they were in fourth grade in 2018. And again, keep in mind that not all students tested during 2020, so we don't have good comparisons there. And then again, for our eighth grade, it's that slightly lighter colored, maybe lilac, you would call that, as eighth graders, when they were sixth graders, and then when they were fifth graders. Yep. So that is their RIT score, and a RIT score is the rate of improvement score for the kiddos, so it tells us how are the kiddos doing in comparison to the other ones? There are state norms that we can compare these to. What we want to see is that that RIT is increasing as the kiddos get older, and it, it depends on the assessment as well as the grade level, what is expected as average. So we want to see that that is increasing as the kiddos progress through the grade levels.
The MAP test gives us two, two main data points, at least in the aggregate. The RIT score is basically the attainment, like the, the average achievement. There's also growth scores where we expect the kids to grow their RIT score by so much year, you know, depending on the, the different grade level. So this is specifically just looking at the attainment and achievement level, not necessarily the growth or expected growth on this slide.
Correct.
This, this clearly shows that there was a, a little bit of learning lag or whatever from COVID, because they were attaining a level in the fourth grade and the overall-
So the purple is the same grade, 220.2?
Yep.
Yes.
So it's that same group of kiddos, we call that a cohort, that same group of kiddos when they were in fourth grade, fifth grade, and now that they're in seventh grade. Yeah, of course. Then each of the buildings would include their reflections, positives, as well as areas that they would like to improve upon, and then these will become their building-based goals as we move through the presentation and then into this year as well as future years. And principals, if there's anything else that you guys can think of that I should add in here, especially junior high, you're more than welcome to shout out. Thank you. Language usage is another area that's part of the MAP assessment, and what I will say is in third and fourth grade, we did not have all of the students participate in language usage this year. We were really focusing on trying to help that learning loss and improve that gap of learning loss over the last year and a half during COVID, so rather than having the kiddos take another language usage test at third and fourth grade, we had them focus more of that time in the classroom, working with the teachers. So you won't see a lot of that data from the element, as much data at all of the elementaries. All right, so again, looking at that, you're going to look at this one, we want to see lower numbers in that red and orange, higher numbers in the percentages of kiddos that are at that average, high average and high, so yellow, green, and blue is the, where we want to see our kiddos. So they have seventh and eighth grade here, and again, this is that cohort data where it takes you through the kiddos when they were in fourth grade, fifth grade, and now in seventh, and then fifth, sixth, and now in eighth. So you can see this one, again, there was, we were maintaining, and then there was a slight dip after COVID. What I will say, when we've been comparing these, the dip from COVID was not anything that was significant. It was, for most of the grade levels, it was only a couple of points if we saw anything, so that's where we're working. You'll see a lot of the school improvement plans focuses on the, the new curriculum that we have in place through Dr. Cheserick and all of the work that she's been doing with not only that new curriculum, but also our instructional coaches and how that's going to help improve and target our instruction. Again, here, we have our positives in our areas for improvement. Same thing with math data, you'll see the percentiles and the percentages of each, of the number of kiddos at each percentile, seventh and eighth, and then we have that cohort data again. We have our positives in areas of improvement for math. And then at the intermediate and junior high level, you will see science. The elementary schools will not have a science component because the kiddos only start to test at fifth grade there, so they'll add all of that data in for the cohort data as well, and then science reflections of positive and areas for improvement. Then we dive into our social, emotional learning data. The social, emotional learning data comes from a screener that our staff complete with our students. They also have behavioral referrals in here, and then we have additional data such as our chronic absenteeism, our chronic truancy. Note that our chronic absenteeism is students missing 10% or more of the school, 10% or more of the school days per year, and then chronic truancy is the students missing 5% or more of the school days. In my mind, those, those terms should almost be flipped because I think chronic truancy sounds more significant than chronic absenteeism, but this is the way that the state categorizes the two. So you can see here, they have the number of students that fall in each of those categories. I will also say that this number has become much higher during COVID for various reasons. One would be the numbers of quarantines, as well as we've had some kiddos that, everything with COVID has been difficult for them, and we've seen an increase in our kiddos that we might have more school refusals, so that's again where our social, emotional, our social workers, our school counselors, and our administrators have been working even harder to get kiddos back in school.
And is this for this year?
This is, yes, all of this is for this year, so you can see this is real data here. When you do, if you compare this to the school report card that is through ISB, you will note that information is always a year prior, so that, that would have been last year's data. The DESA screener, to go back to that, is a screener, it's a series of questions that each teacher's complete for their assigned- The DESA screener, to go back to that, is a screener, it's a series of questions that each teacher's complete for their assigned students. So at the elementary schools, it's pretty easy. Those are assigned through their homerooms. So the teachers that they spend the majority of the day with. At the intermediate, do you guys do homerooms or language arts classes? I can't remember. First class of the day and then junior high? Okay, so we, we try to focus on the tie, the teachers that the kiddos would spend the most amount of time with to complete the DESA screener. And it flags our students for areas of concern. It categorizes students in the areas of your social emotional as a strength, your social emotional is good, or your social emotional is a concern. So you can see all of that information through each of those. In addition, the junior high added their S O S, which is the signs of suicide screener. You will not see this in every single building. This is data that we've brought you a couple of times this year already. They did it in the fall. And we, we have noted that this year has seen a significant increase in the numbers of referrals for this. I apologize, compared to previous years. So that is something that our social workers and our counselors at the junior high have been, have been working all hands on deck the entire year. To support our kiddos that have flagged through this screener and have been repeat visitors to our, our hashtag team feelings offices. And then we have the reflections for the social emotional data again, that each school will have. And then they go into their building goals. So if you look at this, it'll talk about their current goals for this year. For each of the buildings. And then it breaks it down from goals into specific tasks that they're going to utilize to achieve those goals. So almost an, an action plan for each. And I think we came to the end there. Some of the buildings, you might see some faces on these. Our teams have put in the pictures of all of the team members. So you guys would see specifically who's a part of the teams. I'm trying to think if there's anything else that we've missed. There, the big component that I, I want you guys to look at is not only that, that data. But looking at their goals, their reflections on what's working and where do we need to go in the future. So even though we've compiled this or our teams at the buildings have compiled this now, this is an ongoing. An ongoing problem solving and discussions that they have monthly or weekly at the buildings. To ensure that we are constantly looking for forward progress and making our buildings better for all students. Any questions or anything to add?
Just the, so that's the, the basic template of what we asked each school to give you. So there's a ton of information in there, which is why we weren't asking each of them to come up and present this. Because the, the charts would start to gloss over at some point. I've already been making some little, you know, to do notes about adding like a glossary of terms. So there's a lot of acronyms in there that, you know, you may not be familiar with like with DESA, you know, DESA stands for. I can't even remember. I know I've looked it up before, but yeah.
The Deveraux Assessment of Social Emotional and Learning Needs.
Bravo, bravo.
Yeah, there's, it's in, those are the words, but that might not be the order.
Yeah, and, and going forward, as we get into the, the fall, we will start to present some of these action plans in the fall rather than waiting until April. But COVID has dominated so much of what we had to talk about in the fall. We, we wanted to get the pertinent information to you back then. This is letting you know what the schools have been doing, how they develop their goals for the year. And then look for any feedback on the reports themselves as we look to improve it for next year.
Okay, so forgive me if, if, if you mentioned it or if I glossed over it. On one of the slides is 31, those color coded low, low meat or average, the, the MAP scores. Are those scores, are the grading system we come up with or is that a, a MAP determination? That's.
Yeah, so the, the, where you talk, the red, yellow, orange, green and blue. That is categorized not only by MAP. There's also other ones that we can pull, pull to project. How well would these kiddos do? Like, for example, my son that's in sixth grade, how well will he do when he has to take those college board assessments when he's in high school? So that, that has a direct correlation with success of the kiddos as they go on. So again, that's why we want to pull more kiddos from that red and yellow into those other colors to help them be more successful in the future through interventions targeted instruction.
And then, sorry, my only other question, with the S O S, these charts, I think we mentioned this before, is having some context with those numbers as we go forward. What they were previously versus now might be extremely helpful to see kind of where we're at with. Because looking at, you can tell there's percentage of students, but it's hard to tell where it was a year ago or two years ago. And then will it, in three years, where it was now? So.
Yes, we're definitely going to continue to keep an eye on that and we'll, we'll have comparison data as we go, not only just for the junior high. But looking at that social emotional screening data as we move year to year. And Jason, did you have, or Mr. Finkelstein, did you have anything to add for the signs of suicide? Because I know your social work and your counseling team has added quite a bit to support the kiddos there.
Is directly in front of me. That graph is broken on the total students and then levels one, two and three. So level one is students who have been identified as having a need, but the need is not necessarily imminent. Maybe student that has had an ideation or student says, I need to follow up with somebody at your convenience. Level two is a student who has confided in us that they do require a follow up. Maybe we have 24 to 48 hours because there's not an imminent risk, but they have made something, you know, they, they've hit a threshold that is serious enough to move them up to that next level. And level one, we actually have the responsibility of meeting with them before we send them home. This year we had, I'm sorry, that was level three, we had more level threes this year than we had total flagged follow up students in any of our years prior. So we had more kids that we couldn't send home that day than we had total follow ups two years prior, before COVID. And then the year prior, I think this is only, you might have, it's year 30 of implementation. So kind of four years in with a year off for COVID. But yeah, this, to put into context, it's been greatly increased, scary. But our, our counselors and social workers are relentless about making sure that these kids' needs are met. Yes. Yeah, so we notify, we notify the parents, absolutely. So we notify the families before we implement the signs of suicide screener. And then we have thresholds of notifying the parents as we do the follow up. So for the majority of our students, they would get notified that, hey, next week on Tuesday, we're doing the signs of suicide screener. And then for the majority of families, hopefully, there is no follow up. Those kids would go, they would take their screeners just in class. It's part of their health curriculum. Well, the, the, the social emotional, the teachers, the social workers and counselors push into the P E and health classes as kind of seamless fit. So we implement it in the health classes. Most of these kids will take that screener just right there in class, turn it in, and that's the end of it. But when they get kind of quick rated as the kids are leaving and we do that assessment of the numbers, then we're pulling those kids for the follow ups. And that's where, yeah, then the, the parents are brought in. It's, it. It, it varies, it varies case to case so greatly. And we have so many kids and, and it, like I said, the knees are getting higher to a point where it's scary. It's, as soon as I try guessing, I'm wrong. Sometimes, you know, if I, if I'm convinced I know how a parent's going to react, it takes me by surprise still. So it, I mean, it's among the toughest of conversations we have with the parents. There's no way that, you know, it's still, it's our babies we're talking about. Yeah, and again, that, there's, there's so much and a lot of times it's, it's, it's outside of the school. You know, for a lot of the students, we see that school is the consistent safe haven. It's the warm meal. It is, you know, it's the, the faces that say good morning every day. But again, that's, it's different from kid to kid. I will tell you just, you know, the one observation I can soundly make is I feel like COVID has done a number on their ability to cope. Just coping skills in general have, have declined. So that's been an uphill battle for us, but I don't think there's an answer to, you know, what's causing it or how it's reacted to.
I could definitely say that it, it definitely varies student to student. I know in speaking specifically with our counselors and the social workers at the junior high. They've shared that they've seen an increase in the number of kiddos that are in advanced placement classes that they might not have spoken to in previous years. But that are having anxiety. And it could be anxiety about the courses. It could be anxiety COVID related. It could be anxiety about family. It could be anxiety about things completely outside of the school environment. But it's still something that we're seeing an increase in anxiety, a decrease in those coping strategies. And an increase of, we had a conversation today at our just schools training about the increase in trauma to kiddos just in general. And even if we think ourselves, various levels of trauma, COVID was trauma for everybody. The world had to stop due to it and we're still coping with that and we need to teach our kiddos how to cope even better. So next year, this year and next year, as we continue to dive more into our social emotional learning. That's going to be a big focus, not only for how we're working with students, but even our teachers. And helping give our teachers more tools to have trauma based instruction and trauma informed instruction in every single classroom.
And it's, it's scary and it's overwhelming, but I think we see a, a light in, in the tunnel of getting the kids built back up to a, a, a level of normalcy. Not that this problem's ever going to go away, but getting the numbers back down to earth. I think, you know, we're seeing it's been a year and a half since the kids have stressed about class or stressed about a test. It's been a year and a half since they haven't had a friend to sit next to in class. So all these stresses are so much bigger and, and it's such a newer feeling for the kids that feel like we just need to get over this kind of reintegration into normalcy. And we'll start seeing it turn back, I'm hoping.
... Subject, with between 25 and 40% of the kids were either red or orange. And I know a couple of years ago when I was. We had talked about, oh, we have to make sure that the homework and students that were clearly working with them. And to me, it just, that just sounds like a high level.
That's our, that's our M T S S process. So the multi tiered system of supports. So we have interventionists in each building that target the kiddos that are underperforming. And if that's reading, math, reading comprehension, reading fluency. So it's, we really do focus heavy handed at the elementary levels. Because we know that that's where you can capture so much growth with the kiddos. And that's not to say that by the time they get to the intermediate or junior high, we're washing our hands. We're still targeting those interventions and we're still utilizing strategies to help the kiddos. You know, if that, if that be that they do need a special education, individual education program, or if they just need continued intervention support. Or it could even be that they just need homework help where they're, they're utilizing more practice time to practice those skills. So yes, definitely, we are still utilizing our M T S S systems within each of the buildings.
And just to clarify, it used to be known as R T I, response to intervention. So that may be the phrase that you remember from your, your, your prior time. But yes, we've, we've had a support system of interventions for probably well over a decade, I, I would say, you know, possibly going on two. But yes, this is one of the data points that they use to identify people for the M T S S process. It's not the only data point.
Other questions? I really appreciated that, I'm sure these were a lot of work to put together, but that they have the same, you know, flow to them. It makes it easy to go back and forth and look. I went through all of them today. So I really appreciated the difference or the similarities between and making it really easy to kind of digest the information. So thank you for that.
And thank you to Dr. Stopp and to all of the, the principals and probably some of their school improvement teams as well for all of the work to, to pull this data together and get it in a nice presentable format. So thank you all. The next agenda item used to be down under communication, but one of the, some of the feedback we discussed at this table was. Some of the board members didn't want to chime up because I had just kind of wrapped up the meeting in my admin report. So we put board updates and board, you know, anything that the board would like to share about, you know, some event that you may have seen or some topic you'd like to bring up. We decided to add it to this section and then we'll wrap up with admin reports.
Yeah, I'll, I'll lead off because I wanted to mention something about the family fun night at the junior high last Wednesday. And I could go on and on about Mr. Finkelstein and the crew and the, the team leading it and all that. But I'm actually just focused on the students because it was just amazing to see the young people and their capabilities shining and their personalities. My son, disclaimer, nine years old, kept saying, what about this teacher? I want to go talk to that teacher. He's talking about students. They were so professional and so amazing. And this is skills that you'll need in high school, college, getting a summer job. And just to provide that experience for them too, I thought was amazing. So it was all fun. But what I was struck by is just how, how wonderful the student helpers were, the student council. So, so thank you for all that.
Yeah, I would echo that as well. It was a great night. It was fun to see people in our buildings and engaging without a task to do that was anything but fun. So it was very well done. Appreciated the invite to go and see all the work your staff, I know dedicated their time and their resources. And student council as well had hands in that. Mr. Gensler, shout out being in a dunk tank for two hours. He let every kid dunk him. So that was above and beyond, I would say. Also wanted to give a shout out to Ox Sable for their awesome Boosterathon assembly. We have the P T O president here who volunteered to be slimed along with Ms. Mano. That was very enjoyable to watch for us. So that was, that was great to see the energy. Some of those kids, it was their first assembly. And just seeing the, their faces light up and the fun back in the buildings has been absolutely wonderful to see. And I think I speak on behalf of the board when I say we're excited to get back into the buildings and see these things happening and participate alongside you.
All right, we will move into administrative reports. Mr. Searle is the closest to the podium, so we will invite our buildings and grounds director up.
Good evening. I'd like to try to provide you with a brief update on the buildings and grounds. The HVAC replacement project at M E S is moving forward with our first construction meeting scheduled for the end of April. To date, we have had only one large supply interruption, which we think is pretty much a miracle. This was with a valve in the each and every rooftop unit, which has been resolved today. To this point, we've been able to work through other small issues. We anticipate a on schedule start as soon as school ends. We've been in contact with the principals and at M E S to discuss questions regarding what teachers should do to prepare for the construction. And kind of what they, what to expect at the end of the school year. We're currently finishing final plans for a replacement playground for M P C. This rebuild will bring M P C playground up to date with compliance from state regulations. We're expecting the playground to cost somewhere around $185,000 and be completed by the end of summer. This should be an item for action on the next board meeting. We'll be completing several other small flooring projects at the junior high.
Can I, can I jump in? That, that is, the M P C playground is what we are basically using the Davidson Trust donation. So that's where the number of 185,000 came from. So that's, that's being funded by a generous donation from the, the Lorraine Davidson Trust.
We'll be completing several small flooring projects at the junior high and administration offices. We'll also be working on completing an A D A entrance for the administration building. Our architects, S T R, are in the process of creating drawings that will help us complete the necessary work. Additionally, we also intend to repair and upgrade some of the HVAC in the administration side of the building, such as where we're sitting right now. Which is in need pretty, pretty desperately. This summer will be a continuation of the parking lot maintenance and repair program, just like last year. This will include some work at each and every school. Finally, we will, we have started pulling the wire for our maintenance grant, which is to improve our car to access reading systems at each school. This work should be completed by the end of summer as well. Also like to make a quick mention about two new electronic road signs. These will be located at Walnut Trail and at Ox Sable. Would appears to be fully funded through the P T O. And we're just doing a little support, kind of in-house, maybe some wire pulling and different odds and ends. But I think it'll be, it'll be a great improvement. I think it'll probably spur on some additional ones down the road. Any questions? Just too exciting. So thanks a lot, guys. Appreciate it.
Mrs. Robinson, do you have anything? Dr. Cheserick?
Our social studies and science programs at the sixth through eighth grade level. As you know, as I've mentioned throughout my reports each month, that I've been meeting with the social studies and. with the social studies and science committees. Actually started meeting back in December. At the beginning of the year, the focus was more on the elementary ELA and math committees and teams that I've been working with, but actually the social studies and science teachers reached out to see if we could meet. So I started meeting with them in December. And at our initial meetings, we were reviewing our current curriculum. And the last textbook adoption for both social studies and science was between 2007 and 2009. Since that time, there's been a new adoption of science and social studies standards for the state of Illinois. And it's not really new. The NGSS science standards were adopted back in 2013, and the C3 social studies standards have been around for five to six years. So our teachers have done a tremendous job of supplementing the resources that they have. So they have worked very hard to keep the resources available for students and to be timely with their lessons, having them aligned to the current standards. But they are in need of some more resources to use, some more current resources. So back in December, we reviewed the program that we have, and they've had, you know, supplements like the Gizmo's program for science, a subscription, Nuzella, which has been added. So they've been adding some supplements to the program, but their actual textbooks are, you know, in not too good a shape from 2007 to 2009. So anyway, back in December, we also reviewed what our neighboring districts are using as far as social studies and science curriculums. So we looked at that in December. Then when we met in January, we started to do some research on some programs that are being used locally and districts that are pretty much current and up to date. So we selected three to four programs from each to look at samples. So we had the company send us samples. We did some research, and for social studies, we reviewed National Geographic, TCI, and Savvas. In science, we did a review of OPSCIED, TCI, Amplify, and Savvas. We reviewed the sample materials, which were both print and digital, and we developed questions about each program. And I sent the questions to each of our reps, so they would have an idea ahead of time what our teachers were inquiring about. Also, what we're looking at as far as going forward is, most programs are fully digital, which there would be a teacher's subscription and students would have access. Textbooks, not so much. We would probably look for a teacher set, a half-set per classroom of textbooks, which would be probably 20 textbooks per teacher. Because now, quite honestly, everything is online, it's digital, and there's complete access for both students and teachers. But looking forward, in February, we had our virtual program presentations from each of the publishers, and the teachers developed a list of pros and cons from the information that they received about each company. Then in March, we completed the program presentations, and then the teachers did a formal review of each program. They utilized the Science Equip Rubric for Science, which is based on the NGSS standards, and they used the Social Studies Curriculum Review Guide, which includes the C3 standards. So they did a formal review. And the results of the review in March were such that there was one program that rose to the top, and that is the Savvas program. It scored even twice as high as, for example, TCI, which was the second runner-up. So as far as Savvas goes, our neighbors Plainfield, Yorkville, and Coal City all use the Savvas program. So that was in March. Then, now in April, we've been reviewing the rubric results, and going forward, we were looking to pilot for next year, pilot a program for each social studies and science. If we pilot, they would be able to give us a certain amount or number of subscriptions for teachers and for students. So we're looking at receiving quotes from Savvas, which we have started to receive quotes. I'm still working with our representative, Dece, about, you know, possibly getting more of a deal. And so I'm working with her. But I'd like to come back to you in May with an action item for a recommendation to, if possible, fully adopt. And we'd be looking at a six-year license for each. I spoke with Mrs. Robinson about funding for this, and she's smiling, that there would be funding. Do you want to say anything about that?
Well, I'll chime in. So as the board knows, we were, we got a surprising letter from the State Board of Education that due to a coding error, for three years for the Chicago Public Schools enrollment, they had to fix it, and we benefited, we were the beneficiary of, I'm forgetting the number, yeah, $599,000 that we're going to get before June 30. And I copied some of the cabinet members on that email, and within 30 minutes, I think, four people had gone to Mrs. Robinson's and like with a hand, like, "I know something we can do with that. I know something we can do with that." So yes, this is one of the things that we believe might be a wise use of those funds. Everyone's best friend on Funding Day is Mrs. Robinson.
So I just wanted to give you a little preview of that information, and before I would come to you next month. So if you have any questions, please feel free. For social studies, we'd be looking at purchasing a half-class set of textbooks, of actual textbooks, hard copies for each teacher. So that would be approximately 20 textbooks per teacher for social studies. The program, the students have access to the textbook online. The teachers have, you know, all access to, there's assessments, there's, they can assign lessons online. It's all digital. So the only hard copies we'd be looking at would be the 20 per teacher. For science, we'd be looking at, it'd be fully digital, no textbooks, but we'd be looking at purchasing the lab kits, which go with the program. Yeah, we do. We pay for the subscriptions, yes.
Other questions for Dr. Cesare?
Yeah, so we're just, it's social studies and science, they both scored the highest individually. Is that what we're talking about?
The program, Savvas program, and the rubrics that they did, the scores, and they were based on the standards, the items, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Massey, do you have anything? Nope. And I believe Mr. Souza even has some slides he's going to put up.
Good evening. So first of all, I'd like to say a quick thank you to Rich Searle and Aaron Cronby from Maintenance for mounting our camera upside down here, so we can actually get rid of the whole tripod camera shot for the board meeting. We had to do a little extra engineering to make that work. So thank you very much to make that happen. Tonight, you know, probably had five different tech members help out with the setup for tonight. But in particular, Matt and Dave really did like a heavy lift, trying to just make this look nice. Every board meeting, we try to make something better. So we feel like we've done that so far. Lastly, a quick shout out and thank you to Pam for setting up all of our online student registration. That's live and has been publicized. There's a lot that work generally starts in January and then launches, you know, when we did. A lot of moving parts to actually make all the forms do what we wanted to do. And just for the quick stats, we have 44 new students registered for 2223 already. So these are all like new students. And over 650 students have submitted, or parents have submitted on their behalf, the online registration packet so far. So registration is ongoing, so pretty excited about that. I have to kind of, well, I have to kind of go, unfortunately, we don't really have like an easy way to pull like month-to-month date on that, but I might have that to, I could probably dig for that perhaps.
The easiest thing to do would be wait until the end of our, like, early bird cutoff. So we'll, yeah, let us get to that. We're only in like the third or fourth day here, so.
And then lastly, I've been talking about this for over a year, kind of this server virtualization project. So I thought tonight I'd talk more about why it matters. So a quick history is, over six years ago, we consolidated a lot of servers over at Menucha Elementary School, which serves as like our data center or hub for a lot of our servers and services for the district. Well, now that it's completing the year six, it's time basically to replace all that equipment. In a perfect world, we want to replace that basically after about year five. So we stretched it out an extra year this year, being the sixth year, to really kind of maximize, you know, the initial investment we made. But now it's, you know, we're coming up to the time to just replace. So you may say, why did we even do all that? There's four major reasons. One, it's cheaper to buy a couple larger servers and have multiple things running on them than multiple smaller ones. We save money with heating and cooling costs, because there's less things to cool and less things dumping heat out 24/7. It's easier for us to maintain, and it helps us with disaster recovery. Disaster recovery is kind of like the technology team's version of a fire drill. And that's where, what do we do when something breaks and gets shut down, power gets cut off? How do we return services to the rest of the other buildings? Because right now, like at Menucha Elementary School, if they were to lose power for more than about an hour and a half, all the other buildings would feel it in one way or another. So, you know, this, this new technology and new upgrades will ease that, give us the opportunity to kind of like recover services maybe at a different even building, which we've been drilling over spring break and winter break last year. So you may say, okay, that makes sense, Aaron, but how does it help, let's say, a new student rolling in? So we have a new student here, Adam, rolling in, and how does he actually use all this equipment? Not that, Adam, but yeah. So I'll just kind of walk through maybe an exciting student day. So Adam gets an email or phone call that says, "Hey, your student will be picked up at 6:45, so have him ready at the corner by your house." So obviously, the bus routing software and system is running, and things are going well there. Then Adam is assigned an account and a device, and the class opens up the Student Links page, which is like the homepage with all the links that teachers have students go to, and then they complete a web activity and a homework assignment. They go to the library, they check out a book, so the library system, and they go outside for recess. But unfortunately, Adam falls, scrapes his knee, and goes to see the nurse. The nurse then logs the incident in their system, maybe gives a Band-Aid. And because he gave a Band-Aid, maybe calls home and lets Adam, Adam's parents know, "You're gonna have a couple Band-Aids, and your kids like coming home." So all this kind of runs on top of our infrastructure stack over at Menucha Elementary School. On top of that, there's a lot of what we would affectionately call a kind of technology glue, taking numerous data exports and imports, running it through different ways of processing, and ultimately turning it into information. A more obvious example might be from our bus routing software. We take their data export, which is in kind of one kind of ugly format. We run it through a lot of complex scripting, and then we update Power School then multiple times a day with the updated, like Adam, Bus Number 35. So in the event of, let's say, Bus 35 were to break down, Transportation, the front office at Adam's school, could easily select all the afternoon students of Bus Number 35 and email text parents saying, "Hey, Bus 35 broke down, unfortunately. However, everyone's safe. It's just gonna be 25 minutes late today." So all of that kind of like glue, if you will, happens over at, on the equipment over at Menucha Elementary School that we'd like to replace. Ultimately, our next steps, we already have an RFP on our website. It's been out there for quite a while. It's gonna end at April, so we're gonna have, we expect to have numerous vendors bid their own creative solutions, and hopefully then bring to you guys for a made decision action item, but to be paid for with fiscal year '23 budget items. I have talked with Ray Robinson, and we have put in some budgetary numbers already part of the fiscal year '23 request. And with that, I will take any questions. Multiple servers. Yeah. Yeah, we've looked at cloud, and it seems like we're at this in-between stage where we're big enough where it actually makes sense to keep things in-house, or services, some services in-house, where to actually take it up to, say, AWS, which we looked at over a year and a half ago, it actually was more expensive just because of our variety of systems, where we're not super large, where, you know, the actual bill, so it's, we're in this weird kind of Goldilocks scenario, where it seems like it makes the most cost-effective sense actually to keep numerous systems locally in-house. So, yeah, I was actually kind of surprised at that when we sat down with a couple different companies. They're like, "Oh, we'll save you a ton of money." Like, well, here's what we run here, let's see it. And then it didn't go as we thought. Yeah, and then part of, part of this proposal is going to be increasing and leveraging better backups of this. But we have done, we do have a pretty robust system now, but we look to improve upon it as well as part of this proposal. For example, when we did our kind of IT fire drill, disaster recovery over spring break, where we purposely like turned off the print server, for example, and like, "Oh, no, nobody can print the entire district." Well, then we turned it on over at a machine over at Walnut Trails, simulating kind of like Menucha Elementary School lost power or something. And then within, you know, a half hour or so, we were able to get printing to come back on, where when we drilled back in December over winter break, we could not get printed, printing did not come back. So as we drill, we've learned, every time we drill, just like a traditional fire drill that principals run, you learn what works, what works great, what surprised you, what did not work. So, and we keep, we will plan to do even a larger one over summer break as well. So it's all part of the kind of the business continuity planning as well. So part of the large Menucha Elementary School HVAC system is going to have a gas power generator that powers some of the critical HVAC systems, but also like three electrical circuits that the heart and blood, if you will, of 201 technology run on as well. So that's another reason why the cloud now makes, you know, arguably less sense. If we are going to actually have a backup power generator at Menucha Elementary School, then one of the big bonuses of a cloud hosting setup is then local power isn't really your responsibility or your problem. But if we're gonna solve that, then it makes even more sense to utilize that, since we're just gonna be taking a couple electrical circuits off the backup generator. It's not just a sole IT project there, so kind of a joint project.
Do you, how many servers are we running now? And as we look at that newer technology, and we're talking about consolidating, what ideally would that number look like?
Well, we have, right now, we have three large servers and a storage system. We'll likely either go down to possibly two or keep it at three, depending on what kind of the proposals come in. There's kind of competing technologies and how this stuff works. But on top, what we're, so we have two, you know, two large physical machines there, but there's actually 38, like, virtual machine servers running, like the library system, the health system, the phone system, you know, all those different things. So everything kind of gets slammed into, kind of modularized, if modularized, if that's a word. So we're looking to just replace like the kit, if you will, because it's just kind of, we've hit our lifespan on it, so. We are gonna look at, possibly use that as an additional kind of potentially backup solution, and/or use it for training, just developing a nice like sandbox kind of scenario for the tech team to better leverage and train our own staff, and have just an actual like testbed to things where nobody will notice that things go really south. Right now, we, yeah, give or take, playing with production sometimes, so.
Thank you.
All right. First, I would like to remind our board and our community that our multilingual department has partnered with Troy's multilingual department to offer a community resource fair that'll be this Saturday, April 23, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. at the Troy Middle School Junior High Campus. So that's something definitely that we're looking forward to. They have, I believe, over 30 different organizations that'll be represented there, including the Shorewood Troy, Public Library, United Way, Guardian Angel Home, YMCA, Workforce Center of Will County. They'll also have some supplies and free giveaways to families. So that's definitely something that if anybody's free this coming Saturday, we'd love to see you guys there. I appreciate all the work that Ms. Erica Martinez put in to developing that with Troy School District. And then I would actually like to share a quick update on the Menucha Community Partnership Program, which is the grant that we were awarded. We found out that we were awarded that, oh, hang on one second, I'm trying to share, and I'm sharing my wrong screen, the grant that we found out that we were awarded back in March. So give me just a second, and I'll pull this one up here. So give me just a second and I'll pull this one up here. Excellent, okay. So the Manuka Community Partnership Program is a grant that we applied for in the fall of 2021. We received the initial application, submitted that in around, I think it was November 11th. And we really hadn't heard anything back. We received word back like that we had missed one checkbox on that. So we had resubmitted it and they said, okay, we'll consider it. And then we didn't hear anything until March, when we found out that we received our approval. And then just last week, we got our final allotment, which was a total of $635,000 over two years. So we were quite excited about that. The requirements of the grant are presented here, but basically we need to integrate a student wellness program. We need to look at expanding our learning time and opportunities for, for students, specifically looking at our students from marginalized communities. Look for active parent or guardian and community engagement. And then create collaborative leadership and practices with community organizations. So it's really going to be a community partnership program where we're going to be working with community programs, community businesses to bring supports into our schools for our kiddos. Again, the grant allotment, so this year we have between March 11th and the end of September 2022 to spend $325,000. And then next school year to spend another over $300,000 for this grant. So we put our heads together and exactly how, how are we going to do this? So from March to September, we've been working on identifying a program coordinator that is going to help us create the grant and create those community partnerships. That's one of the most important parts of this grant. We have to submit the final grant application by May 15th, which we are excited because that is a little bit longer than originally they said, May 6th. And they didn't have anything open for us in the ISB system to actually start working until just last Friday. So we've been very nervous about getting everything up and running. We have the logistics model that we'll be creating and that's going to look at the budget as well as the scope of the plan. We have to create an evaluation plan for the program and then start with our partnership list. So who are we targeting? Who are we going to partner with? So that's going to be our big focus over the next few weeks. The rest of the spring and summer, we're going to be creating those community partnerships, actually reaching out, maybe even going and visiting some of our community partners so we can see what can we bring to our kiddos. Some of the ideas we're going to be looking at are, you know, looking at the health departments, looking at the hospitals, looking at our, maybe local artists in the area that can come in and teach our kiddos art. Mental health experts, yoga studios that can come in and teach our kids yoga. We've even talked about perhaps martial arts, maybe somebody that can come and teach them some leisure or like physical activities. So we have so many different ideas. Ms. Massey and I have been working the, over the last few weeks on just brainstorming different solutions and different partnerships that we can create. The libraries, have I missed any, Ms. Massey? Yeah, so we have a lot, like just a full list of ideas that we can create. And we've had some of our fellow administrators have been sharing ideas like, hey, this is another partnership that you might want to look into. So we'll create thematic units of what those activities will look like on the days that we're working with kiddos. We need to recruit our staff, purchase our online learning platforms. Those online learning platforms are going to be that expanded learning time where the kiddos can either work with our staff in addition to the school day or they would be able to practice their skills in addition to the school day. General supplies, especially if we're doing arts and music and crafts and stuff like that. We want to be able to have a nice, robust supply list. And then the other component, as one of the big components when we initially applied for the grant is they wanted to get kiddos back into a safe learning environment. And when they spoke about safe learning environment, they actually, they spoke about environmentally safe. So this can assist with our air filtration system that we're improving at Manuka Elementary School as well. So next school year, our plan is going to be to target student registration. Lots of advertisements over the school, over the summer, so we can get a student interest going. Have the kiddos register. We need to work on transportation. So we'll be able to provide transportation from the program home for the kiddos. And this would also expand into activity buses. So at our campus, when we have kiddos that are participating in after-school activities, we'll now have transportation that can be funded through this grant. Community, continued community involvement. We'll actually implement the program. Our program coordinator that will be working with us is going to be in the buildings, visiting the program sites and working with the staff and the students, working with the parents. We've been brainstorming parent, ways that we can get the community and the parents involved as well. So our, our day to day, what is it going to look like? So the goal will be to have two days weekly of supervision for the kiddos, activities of the kiddos, transportation and snacks. We'll also have academic support for the kiddos. So if we have somebody that needs a little bit of extra homework time, the last thing a parent wants to do is if a kiddo stayed in an after-school program, that they've been at that after-school program, they get home around 4:30 or so and then they still have homework to do, that's really difficult for some of our little ones. So there'd be a component where they'd be able to get academic support for their homework. Integrated within the school, so we're going to be collaborating on what's going on in the schools and what can we draw from that to bring into the program, working with our administrators as well as the teachers within the schools. And then of course, those thematic units where we're going to be integrating the arts, social, emotional learning, music, and then again, physical activities. So that's where we've been brainstorming all of those different ideas of the partnerships we can bring in. So our action plan is actually Ms. Massey and I were interviewing the applicants for the program coordinator today. So we're hoping to have some decisions within the next couple of days about that. We'll be, be developing the scope and schedule of the program, developing those community partnerships and then submitting that application all within the next month. And then we're going to start that advertisement through the district and then broaden that scope and the schedule. So we can really look at the specifics of what is this going to look like day to day for those kiddos. Finalizing schedules, setting up transportation and then actually implementation of the program. And our goal is, this program is to create more than just the school day from eight to three or, you know, the 7:30 to 2:30. We want our kiddos and our families to see our school district as a community resource and not just somewhere where the kids have to come and learn, but somewhere where the kiddos want to come and want to be a part of what's going on, all of the special things within our school. And again, our, our biggest focus is going to be outreach to those marginalized communities. And that's where the idea of that transportation came into effect because we know that some of our kiddos can't participate in after-school activities because they don't have somebody getting them home from school. So we want to get rid of some of those barriers that really inhibit kiddos from being able to participate so we can open this up to all. So that's the work that we've done in the last couple of weeks since we found out we've got this award and we've got more money than we thought we were going to. So we have a lot of work to do over the next three weeks to get the applications fully submitted. So we actually get the grant money. And then we'll be working with our coordinator over the next several months and into the next several years to help implement this program on a full scale. Questions?
I would just, just clarifying, the coordinator is an extra duty to an existing employee. This is not a, this is not like a posted full-time position or something like that. And I just want to compliment Dr. Staub, Ms. Massey and all the principals that have helped brainstorm. This has been a lot of work in a very short amount of time that they have put together. We're still only in the, we have a detailed outline of a plan, but there's a lot of details left to go into it. But they've done a great amount of work, especially knowing that like, we had no idea 635,000 was coming for, for this program. So it's really kind of exploded in our, in our planning a bit.
So what were you expecting?
Originally, the grant application was for $250,000 over two, total over two years. So that is more than double that.
So I might have missed it, is this for all schools, all grades, or is it?
So our goal is to have a site at each building, but depending, and this is part of when we were, when we were interviewing for the coordinator position, I think that's going to depend on enrollment. And if we have a high enrollment, like do we share, maybe do we share schools or something like that? So the goal is to have it available to all of our kiddos. We still need to brainstorm, what does that look like for MPC? Because they really don't have after-school being a half-day program, morning and afternoon. So what more can we do for MPC to help bring in the community for them as well? So yes, there is, this will be for all of our kiddos throughout the entire district, pre-K through eighth grade.
So it just seems like everything that you want, $300,000 doesn't seem like it's going to be enough.
We've started working out the budget and, yeah, we, we believe that we can do it with that amount of money. Yeah.
And you have to keep a detailed accounting up?
Yes, yep. So we start with our, our projected budget. And then like we do for many of our other grants, we submit an application. And then with the work of Ms. Robinson, we keep a very detailed account of all of our spending. And then we have to do, I believe this will be a yearly, an annual report, correct? Yeah, yeah. Quarterly, okay. So yes, we have to do expenditure reports and then there's additional grant reporting that we do within the ISB Iwas system that we'll work on. And again, as Dr. Mann said, you know, it's, Ms. Massey and I have been working on this, but that, Ms. Robinson has been sitting down brainstorming and Mr. Souza has been sitting down and brainstorming. Not only, how can we utilize this to fully reach all of our kiddos? But how can we streamline the registration process and make it easier for our kiddos to have access, our parents to register them and then have them into the system? So it's not more cumbersome for the teachers that are working with them. So yeah, it's been a, definitely a team effort here at district office, so I would not be able to do this on my own. I told Ms. Robinson when I got the grant award, like I, I was nearly in tears because I was like, I don't know how we're going to spend so much money within the next few months. But we can definitely, we've found the ways to implement it and have good effects with our kiddos as well.
So is this a new program? Or is this a new, okay, so after two years, you think it's going to be rolling forward or?
So like, I'm not quite sure where the funding source that, I don't know if this was a mix of federal or, or where the state got this, but only 137 entities in Illinois were awarded this grant and they weren't all public school districts. There were colleges, there were some just community service. So this was actually a, a very great honor that our program was selected as, as one of the 137. So we're very excited, but there's just still a lot of work to get done before the May 15th, you know, time for us to submit a lot more detail than we've been able to pull together so far.
That's very cool, congratulations.
I have a couple of questions.
Oh, questions, yes.
I just want to applaud you all on this as someone who has worked on a lot of like last minute grant applications and reporting for grants and things, this is huge. So I applaud you for pulling all of this together. How are we defining or how is it defined? How are marginalized communities defined for this particular application? And then I have a follow-up question.
So they did not specifically define marginalized communities. They, they had it in a list of various others. And if we look back at, sorry. So they, they looked at that homeless youth and care, low income, the LGBTQ populations, our early childhood populations. So those were some of the additional components that they wanted to have included in those marginalized communities. When we really looked at what is the biggest barrier for after-school programming for our kiddos? And we spoke with the administrative teams, it was 100% lack of transportation for the kiddos. So that's where we wanted to bring in that transportation component.
100%, I agree. And when we're looking at the partnership lists, is this inclusive of all the counties within the district?
That was a discussion that we had today as well. It does not just have to be within Manuka. It can be within Grundy County, Will County, Kendall County, knowing that our district encompasses more than just what's right here downtown Manuka, that we need to look at resources that all of our families could pull from.
Excellent, and some of those partnerships will be those organizations or agencies that also provide services for these marginalized populations and communities.
Yes.
So you have a broader, a broader pool of partners.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is this something kids will be able to, I know you said it was like two days a week. So students that are in sports or activities as those things come and go seasons, is this something they'll be able to kind of rolling enroll into? Or is this something you commit to for the year? Or do you even know the answer to that yet?
We've, I don't know a solid answer on that, but we discussed the importance of being able to, so if we have a kiddo that joins and then makes the basketball team, we would still want them to be able to be a part of this program if they're not within, if they're not at basketball practice or something like that. So we would not want to withhold membership to anybody. We want to make sure that anybody has access to this because everybody can benefit from the activities that we'll be putting together.
Yeah, and I, even on the flip side, if this gets rolling and families start to see the value and the benefit of the additional enriching, enrichment and services that we can provide, I don't think we're going to want to prohibit students from joining in October or something like that if they did not sign up at the beginning of the year. I've got a longer list than, than normal, but a lot of it is just some, some housekeeping stuff. So we've spoken before that graduation is scheduled for the 24th. In the, the principal report, it still says tentatively and we, we traded text today. We're ready to take the tentative off that, it is going to be the 24th. If the world changes on us again and somehow, somehow South Campus is not an option, we will find a way to do this on the 24th at the junior high school. So graduation is on the 24th. I believe the board also had an invitation to their awards night, the junior high school awards night at your location. That takes place, I believe it's May 11th, if I, if I have the night right, yeah. So that's, that's always a, a nice event where students are presented with awards and they don't even know what award they're getting. They just know that, you know, that their name is likely to be called that night. So it's, it's some pretty exciting, it's a pretty exciting evening. And the staff always does a really nice job of putting that together. Wanted to let the board know, we were, we've been approached by the Village of Manuka. I, now that the Ridge Road reconstruction is entering kind of final stages, they have been approached by the county, so it goes from county to the Village of Manuka and then they are now reaching out to us. They'd like to do some landscape and like some, some basically tree improvements along Ridge Road. They've asked us if we'd be willing to, to partner with them on, you know, adding, you know, landscape beds and, and trees and, and things of that nature. So, you know, I, I would be fully in support of partnering, anything that we can do to, to keep the campuses looking, you know, nice along that berm. So I would be recommending that we assist with that. If you guys have any feedback for me, please let me know there. I think Dr. Staub mentioned it, but today our, our initial district team, along with the, sorry, the junior high school that invited some of our, our district, the, the Just in Schools training, we completed the final, final of our training today. I know there are, we still already have dates scheduled for next year for each of the, the other school buildings to participate with their teams. But I think everyone that participated in this and I, I think we're going to be planning on getting some feedback from all of them that we can share out with the other schools and all of that. But it's, it was just a good transformative process, always just wonderful reflection as, as we learn about, you know, diversity, equity, inclusion. You know, all, it, it, you know, people were in tears and pretty much every session, somebody broke into tears and just had really, really good reflections about, you know, how we can improve, how we can keep moving down this path of inclusion. So congratulations to Mrs. McCarron for setting this up and to the team at the junior high school. And when, we are so excited about continuing down this path. There will be opportunities for other board members to participate in next year. So when we get a little bit more information and we get a little further, we'll make sure you're aware of the dates if, if you can make that work. Last month, Dr. Staub talked about the Team Megan Bug fundraiser that we did. And at that point, we were, I think we were in the first day and we were talking about, you know, how all the coins that people were going to collect. I know we shared this with you in email, but it was an amazing turnout. I believe it was $13,000 of coins that our district contributed to that. So I, we, we were honored to be able to share that. There was even a matching donor from the Coal City area. We did get a thank you from the Bug family on behalf of that. So I, I think it was over like around $34,000 were collected by the two districts. So it was just a, an amazing contribution. By the donor, right? So up to 68. Yeah. You know, and then right on the heels of that, we learned that one of our Walnut Trails families suffered a loss. And so I know they were, they held a fundraiser for the Schrader family. So we wish them all the best as they cope and we hope that they find peace. And then another fundraiser, the Oxable. And then another fundraiser, the Oxable Booster-Thon, like we, we have a, a local celebrity in the Oxable community. Mr. Shelby is like, every child in Oxable knows Mr. Shelby. And I think Ms. Mano called him the, like their hype man or something that I heard. He spent the entire day on, on Friday, or I'm sorry, on Thursday. And yes, he, he committed to getting slimed. So the, the student that raised the most. And I think he got the one that had oatmeal mixed in because that, that was a, a special batch of slime. But sir, thank you so much for everything you've done for the Oxable community. It's, and I, did I, it was, I think you got over twenty-five thousand that? Just absolutely amazing. So, so bravo to everybody involved there. Last shout out, as I know, I shared it on Facebook because I, I went back and I found the post from MIS, but Laura Cogan, our, received a grant from the Chicago Bears. It's their Classroom Legends Program. And they, they thought that they were just going to like be presenting a little something. And then suddenly George McCaskey jumps on the Zoom or whatever to, to present to Ms. Cogan, our social worker at MIS. So congratulations to that. That was really cool. We, you know, we, we didn't expect it to be as big of a thing. And then boom, suddenly the, the president of the Chicago Bears is on the call. So congratulations to, to Ms. Cogan there. And then finally, I was going to give a shout out to the Pinterest night, but I think enough people already did that. Mrs. Conquest was, you know, sending me texts saying, I think we need like sink the soup next time. And I responded with maybe plunk the prez, like, I don't know. Well, we can, we can work on this, but getting families and volunteers back into our school buildings has been absolutely fantastic. Some of the schools have started going back to the traditional lunch tables where kids can face each other and interact. We've got field trips scheduled again for the end of the year. You can, you can read about all the stuff that the schools are doing in these reports, but we have heard multiple, multiple types of feedback from community members and parents that the kids came home so excited because they're talking about a field trip again. So it, it's not perfect back to normal. You know, we're not one hundred percent there, but boy, it sure feels like we're, we're really close to normal. Tables are coming back into some classrooms and we're getting back into small group work and kids are working in collaboration with one another. So to the whole community, thank you for enduring and persevering with us. And we are just about there. We want this school year to end as normal as it possibly can. So field days are back. We've got an eighth grade trip planned. So we're, we're just about there. We're, we're trying to end this year as strong as we can. So thank you to everyone that has, has battled with us, our administrators, our teachers, all the support staff. We love you all. Thank you for everything you've been doing. And that ends my report. We do have collective bargaining for closed session time.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
I do like the new board, by the way. Thank you.
Okay. I need a motion to go into closed session to discuss collective bargaining.
Make a motion to go into closed session to discuss collective bargaining.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carries.